Okay.
You're ready, you're live.
Very good. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, that is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common love with which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody here who has something to bring before the board that is not on our agenda? Hearing no one come forward, we move on to the next item. We're not going to do the Pledge of Allegiance twice. We have some resolutions here. We have application twenty-one.
Yeah, how about roll call? I don't mean to interrupt, but what about roll call?
There we go. I'm sorry, I jumped right over that. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Meth.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stenzel.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Weiser.
Here.
Board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Logana.
Very good. Now, we've got some resolutions that we can approach. Do I have anybody here who would like to present the resolutions? We have application number twenty-one, colon five, twenty-three. And in your packet is a, an indication of who can vote. And...
You got a hand raised here, Tom.
All right.
Move the motion.
Mr. Didich.
I move the motion to approve application number twenty-one, colon five, twenty.
Okay, do I have a second?
Not second.
Thank you. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. Now, moving on. Uh, we also have a resolution for application twenty-one, five, twenty-three. Is that in here? I don't see that.
I emailed.
I know. Who is eligible for that?
I'm sorry, you don't have that on your...
I make a motion. I'll recommend approval for application number twenty-one, five, twenty-three, Seven and Ten Realty Associates, Seven and Ten Road, Block 202, Lot 903.
Anyone here can second it?
They second that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario?
Yes.
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Meth?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stenzel?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. We have an item on our agenda that is not on our agenda for tonight. We have... Which case was that that was, uh, delayed?
The nine and ten road.
All right. We had an item on our agenda, nine and ten road. They have requested a delay until March seventh, I believe. And what they would like to do, and I believe this is reasonable to do, is they would like to come in and have us vote on a final resolution that night. I don't have any particular objection, but I'd like to have our attorney just, uh, broach the subject and say this is...
Sure.
Reasonable.
Sure. The applicant has requested that the, um, resolution be prepared in draft form so it could be voted on that evening, uh, so after the presentation of evidence. If there's nothing that is earth-shattering, that has changed the underlying facts or the, uh, conditions that will be set forth by this board, uh, then the board has the right and the ability under municipal land use law to vote on the resolution following the presentation. Um, I would, uh, just, um, caution that if there is anything that is, uh, kind of changes, required modifications, I'll indicate to the board such, and, uh, it won't be adopted that evening, and it'll be, you know, disseminated and voted on at the later date. But, uh, the idea is to pass it at the same time after the presentation is complete.
I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that that would be, uh, the plan for that night, but of course, we would have the ability, as the attorney indicated, to say, "We're not going to approve the whole thing tonight."
Mr. Chairman, do you know how many, uh, people they have testifying?
They had one engineer testifying. Uh, the attorney indicated that it was going to be a rather short presentation. There are no variances being requested, um, no, I think there was no design wa- design waivers as well, so it's a straightforward as-of-right application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I thought it was important that the boards, that the board be informed that this is going to be our procedure.
O- only for that application, just may I?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, that brings us to the remaining item on our agenda for tonight, and that is application number twenty-one, colon five, twenty-nine, ADP, ninety-nine Jefferson Road, Block seven thirty-six, Lot seven point four, preliminary and final major site plan for construction of solar carports.
The attorney is running a little late from a, uh, additional meeting. Dr. Ed, he's a coffee. Do you have any possibility that I have to have him tonight?
Should we tell him it was denied?
Hmm?
Should we tell him it was denied because he wasn't here?
Say with ten?
Who's, who's?
Yeah, he's on ten. Uh, Liz Durkin.
The attorney.
Private manager for the, uh, Jefferson Solar Project.
Is she bringing food?
I hope so.
Well, uh...
Want to take a five-minute recess?
We can take a five-minute recess and, uh, wait to see what, uh, the five minutes brings. All right? Do you want me to call the roll, please? I just, just, we are reconvening the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, February seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Please call the roll.
Mayor Barbario?
Here.
Mr. Didich?
Here.
Councilman DePiero?
Here.
Mr. Meth?
Present.
Mr. Napolitano?
Here.
Mr. Stenzel?
Here.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here.
Okay. Counselor, do you'd like to begin your case?
I am. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Elizabeth Durkin, D U R K I N, from the Durkin Firm, on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant is Jefferson Road Solar Project, two thousand twenty-one, LLC. Um, and we're here this evening, I have, I'll just do a brief introductory on the application, and then just, this is the best this evening. The applicant is requesting a full, uh, grand preliminary and final major site plan. There are no variances being sought, there are certain waivers that are being sought so as to install solar carport canopies at the ADP properties on Jefferson Road. Um, the property is Block seven thirty-six, Lot seven point four, in its senior S E B five. And this evening I have two witnesses reporting. One is, um, the engineer from Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech's engineering firm, who compares the plans that have been submitted to the board on behalf of the applicant. And then I also have the project manager from the applicant, asking for any other questions the board may have regarding, uh, solar carports. I did review a certain number of applications that the board had planned that were suitable, so I know that we're permitted in your zone, you all know that we're inherently beneficial on solar panels, so, uh, and we did review the planners' report as well as the engineers' report, where there are any other questions we have to make, to, uh, to review the board.
Can you speak into the microphone? I can hardly hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? I don't know if my...
Pull it closer, it's on.
Pull it closer to you. Okay.
You actually could not hear me?
I got bad hearing.
And plus, we're recording.
For me, I mean, it's, I, I take that as a badge of honor that I... The other thing, just as a matter of preference, Mr. Chairman, uh, as a matter of order, the application has been deemed, has been deemed to complete. I submitted an affidavit of notice and publication and completed everything with, uh, when you submit your more, so we just want to make sure for the record, um, that we have been deemed to complete.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Have you seen the memo of December twentieth, twenty-twenty-one from BFJ Planning, giving the listing of waivers?
Yes.
All right, uh, if you want to walk through the...
Sure. So, um, once again, this is, uh, as we've seen the last couple of meetings, this was a report that was originally done by BFJ Planning from Susan Favate. Um, we did not do the report, but I will do my best to represent her comments. Um, if you look on page one, this is, again, the December twenty, twenty-twenty-one report. There are, under completeness, eighteen comments. I'll try to go through them quickly. Um, under the requirement for DEP letter of interpretation regarding wetlands, uh, there are no wetlands on the site, so, uh, Susan is recommending a waiver. In terms of protective covenants and deed restrictions, the applicant has asked to confirm that none exists will, uh...
And I did submit those to the board. Right, I, there are no, I submitted restrictions other than standard utility easements on the site.
Okay, and you submitted a letter of that effect?
Correct, I actually submitted the title report to the board.
Okay, I, I did not see that, but okay. In terms of highlands, um, apparently the project, uh, will not increase impervious by more than a hundred and twenty-five percent, so it's exempt, recommended waiver. In terms of the zoning table, uh, the table is missing any information on parking. Testimony should be offered on the site's compliance with parking requirements and any impacts. We'll wait, um, for the testimony on that. Uh, spot elevations, the applicant has indicated there are no new buildings or changes to the existing, so a waiver is recommended. Similarly, for the floor plans, no new buildings or changes, waiver is recommended. Um, there is a question about parking aisle dimensions, access and circulation. Um, testimony is requested to confirm no impacts. Terms of signage, fences, walls, and sidewalks, there are no changes, so a waiver is recommended. In terms of utilities, the way the report is written, it says there are no changes to the utilities that are proposed, and a waiver is recommended. I think, though, as, uh, I would request that the engineer, as part of the testimony, talk about what changes to the utilities are being made as part of the solar hookups. I, I don't know that I would agree that no changes are proposed. Um, in terms of lighting, testimony is requested regarding the applicant, or from the applicant, uh, regarding the canopies being internally lit with LED fixtures. Uh, the request is to confirm that there is no light spillage to nearby properties, I would say neighboring properties. In terms of landscaping, no landscaping is proposed. Testimony should be offered on mitigation for tree removal, and, uh, there is, uh, an extensive section in this report about the trees that are being removed. Uh, in terms of solid waste, use of non-residential buildings, traffic study, and environmental assessment report, um, there are no changes, everything is as existing, so waivers are recommended on those items. And, uh, the last two items are conditions of preliminary approval being satisfied and separate sheets for final approval, and this is a combined application, so waivers are recommended for those two items. And that is, uh, that, that ends the completeness section of her report.
Any questions by the board on those waivers? Anybody make a motion to approve the waivers?
Motion to approve waivers?
Second. Very good. Uh, Nora, if you call the roll.
Okay, who seconded that, the waivers?
Mayor Barbario.
Barbario?
Yes.
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Meth?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stenzel?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, do you have any questions about the waivers?
No, I want to thank the board very much for passing that resolution.
Well...
We're good.
We did the waivers, so...
Within the application, I'm not sure how much the board has. I did make extra copies of some photos that we had submitted, but I'm happy to hand them out because I think they're helpful to show you the existing site, the parking lot, and then the, there's some renderings of the proposed solar, uh, can... Yes, great, you have them. Does everybody, because I did make the additional copies. Does anybody need additional copies?
If you have them, I will take an additional copy.
Happy to hand them out.
If you don't have, such things, you guys... Thank you. Tell you what, I'll do what we do at school.
I didn't submit, there are eleven photos that were submitted in our initial application. I don't know if you, if they're submitted, I don't know what this board's purpose is. If they're submitted as part of the application, you want us to start marking in as...
No, it's not submitted.
This is, uh, thanks, Mike. I broke it.
Okay. Are you ready for my first one?
I would hope so.
Okay, I expect to be pressed that, uh, the engineer has sworn in, Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Nichols, please raise your right hand.
Mark Nichols.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please spell your last.
Sure, Mark Nichols, N I C H O L S. Address is three fourteen West Ninety-fourth Street, New York, New York, one zero zero two five.
Counsel, could you qualify the witness, please?
Certainly. Mr. Nichols, are you a licensed engineer? Are you a... You just qualified?
Yes, I am.
And, and, by whom are you employed by?
At Tetra Tech Inc.
At Tetra Tech Inc., are they the engineers that prepare the plans that have been submitted as part of this application?
That is correct.
And have you been involved from the beginning on this project with Tetra Tech?
Yes.
Okay. So are you, what is your position relative to the project, uh, on the team for Tetra Tech?
I'm the staff engineer that prepares the engineering drawings and calculations for the project.
And, but you're licensed in the state of New York, is that correct?
That is correct.
You're not licensed in New Jersey?
Yes, that's correct.
So you have a supervising engineer at Tetra Tech that's licensed in New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
And that's, and his name is?
Brian Seelski.
And, and Mr. Seelski is the engineer who prepares the plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and he's actually here this evening as well. So I don't know if the board likes to swear him in, because I'd like to have Mr. Nichols qualified as an engineer to testify since he is the one who has been primarily responsible for the plans. We also have the New Jersey licensed engineer. I have had a non-New Jersey licensed professional qualified, uh, before the board, the plans are all stamped and sealed by a New Jersey engineer.
Is he going to speak?
Excuse me?
Is he going to speak?
If the board would like him to speak, he can speak.
All right, at that, at that point, you'll have to swear him in.
Why don't we swear him in? You can qualify him as well, and we can get his name on our record.
Okay, perfect.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address for the record, please?
Brian Seelski, S I E L S K I, fourteen Slenderland Ave., S L I N G E R L A N D, Slenderland Ave., Block zero seven four four zero.
I'm just getting qualified, Mr. Stenzel. Um, and you ask, you were just here, you heard that your associate, Mr. Nichols, has been sworn in to testify as the, uh, engineer who assisted on the Tetra Tech plans, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you are the engineer, you're employed by Tetra Tech?
That is correct.
Okay, and Tetra Tech is the engineering firm that prepares the plans that are submitted to this application?
That is correct.
And, and you are the engineer, are you licensed by the state of New Jersey?
I am licensed by the state of New Jersey.
And you're licensed as current as we speak here this evening?
My license is current.
Okay, and you are the New Jersey licensed engineer who signed and sealed the plans that were submitted on the application?
That is correct.
So you are the New Jersey supervising engineer on this project, is that correct? And Mr. Nichols works with you on this plan?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Mr. Nichols, uh, I just want to make sure for the record, you are also licensed by the state of, uh, New, state of New York as an engineer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I have both engineers, if the board, if at least the board, I'd like both of them to be qualified and to testify, um, as engineers, and then have Mr. Nichols proceed personally if the board has any questions that they really think, Mr. Seelski needs to answer, we can do that.
Just, just to satisfy my own curiosity, I'd like the, our fine attorney to, to tell me what the requirements are.
This is a new issue, this is one that I have not had happen. Counsel, can you give me, you said that you've had, um, engineers, non-licensed in the state of New Jersey, testify regarding...
Yes, I have. Uh, I've had, uh, other professionals, architects as well. Uh, when you have projects such as this nature, there's a team of engineers that will work on that project. Obviously, Tetra Tech is an extremely large company, and they're throughout the United States, so...
I would just say that the testimony, any testimony regarding the standards set forth by the New Jersey, uh, the state of New Jersey, any legislation that is being followed and is required for this property, if he's giving testimony regarding measurements of, you know, site descriptions, locations, I think that's more fact witness testimony. Uh, anything specific regarding standards, I would ask that Mr. Seelski provide that testimony.
No, that's, that's absolutely correct. And maybe an easier way of saying it is that relative to this application, anything that requires a licensed professional, a state of New Jersey, and here an engineer, there is a supervising New Jersey licensed engineer who's handling the project. It's just that we also have an engineer who can answer more directly the questions that the board is seeking in their review, who's licensed, who's part of the team, but his license is in New York.
The concern that I have is that the license for New Jersey is specific to New Jersey standards, correct? Or it's...
Well, they're licensed by the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct, and that's, and that being because they're professionals with regard to the standards set forth by the state of New Jersey for construction and development.
Well, they're licensed to be able to be an engineer and practice within the state of New Jersey, you know, different than any other licensed professional.
So they're licensed, so a engineer who's licensed in the state of New York can practice in the state of New Jersey without any issues?
No, the plans are all signed and sealed by a New Jersey engineer.
That's my point, is that any testimony that's specific to the state requirements for soil movement, uh, stormwater management, I don't believe he can testify to that.
Uh, I think he could give testimony to it. Uh, I think maybe, maybe a way to proceed is to have Mr. Nichols proceed. Uh, the New Jersey engineer is here as well, he'll be listening to everything, and then have him come on and, and confirm anything that relates to New Jersey. Is that an easier way to proceed?
Yeah, the difference being is that he can present facts in terms of height, distance, things like that, he just can't draw conclusions based on his own expertise. That's where I have an issue.
Sure, no, fair enough.
So I think if it's more of a fact witness, then I have no problems with that, but if it's more of, um, conclusion, test, conclusory testimony based on his expertise, then I'm going to interject because I don't believe he's licensed in the state of New Jersey to draw those conclusions, because it, you know, he wouldn't have the license to, uh, be presumed to know that information.
That's fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough, so...
Okay, are there any questions by the board on, uh, the witnesses here?
Well, I'd just like to interject that my understanding is, I'm a professional engineer in the city of New Jersey. There's a statute that you're, the only qual, the only profession that is not required to be licensed in New Jersey to provide engineering testimony for a board is, um, I believe wa, um, wireless, uh, engineers, that's it.
So RF engineers?
RF engineers, that's the one, yes. Otherwise, um, I'd be obligated to actually report to the board if I heard engineering testimony by a non-licensed professional.
So I think what we can do is, counsel, is qualify him. No, thank you.
Okay.
And he can supplement any factual information that can help you out, but again, you, the conclusions that you can draw inferences from have to come from him. So we can qualify Mr. Nichols as a fact witness and not an expert, and Mr. Seelski as a expert.
Respectfully, I'm asking the board now, but Mr. Letzke is sitting next to me.
Correct, and, and...
We respectfully request, uh, accept Mr. Letzke as a professional engineer and qualify for the board to testify as such.
Any questions by members of the board on this witness of his qualifications?
Just one question, is your license current?
Yes, that question was asked, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Mr. Meth, are you satisfied?
I am, thank you.
It's important.
I would not be sitting here.
All right, hearing and seeing no questions here, counselor, you have the, let's hear your case.
Oh, thank you so much. Mr. Seelski, are you the engineer who prepares the plans that have been submitted as part of the application that's before the board this evening?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you understand the application is for solar carport canopies at an existing site, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so can you just briefly explain to the board the, uh, the proposed solar canopies that are here to be located?
The, um, the canopies, um, are to be positioned on the, um, parking lot of the ADP property. Um, they are, um, basically going down the, uh, the center island rows, is that the information you're looking for? That's, okay, so, um, as, as, um, we have a rendering, I think, you can see?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think it's best to see the rendering.
And then, just so that the familiarize the board with this site, the site is just shy of about eighteen acres, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's located in, in S E B, uh, five, Specialized Economic Development Zone District, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And it's currently approved as a three-story office building, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, which is occupied by ADP, solely by ADP, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and there's also on the site, uh, existing parking?
That is also correct.
Okay, and there will be no additional impervious coverage other than the, uh, installation of the poles and, and for the can, the solar canopy, correct?
That is correct.
And the solar canopies that are proposed, there's a, there is the proposed development into a three-six solar carport arrangement in the existing surface parking lot, the south of the office, is that correct?
That is also correct.
Okay, and then if you look at, here is the eleven photos with rendering that were submitted as part of the application. Which photo, you just don't mean hand out to the board members?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and you obviously have been to the site on, on several occasions, correct?
Um, no, that is not correct. No, I've driven by it.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I've never, like, you know, walked the site. It's, it's on my way to my office, so...
Okay, uh, so if we look at the, if we look at the first photo?
Yes.
That, that's a, a current site condition, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The same, this is a separate view, the second, the second photo?
Yep.
From the northeast corner of the parking lot, correct?
Yep, that's also correct, yes.
Okay, and then this also, will also help the board to orientate them when we get into the discussions regarding landscaping and tree, that in the second photo in particular, they can see some of those, the small little scrubby trees that will be removed.
Yes, on, on the island, yes.
On the island and inside some of the parking area, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, then you see the, an existing condition, uh, picture, photo number three, where there shows a buffering, and there's a residential neighborhood behind there, correct?
That is also correct, yes.
Again, picture photo four, again, an existing condition picture, correct?
Correct. Correct.
And it shows the current parking lot on the southern side?
Yes.
Of the site, and it also shows, with some, I don't know if you would call those landscaping islands, I wouldn't, I mean, there's, I think there are some landscape islands, but there are some little trees.
I have a, I have a quick question, just looking at the renderings, are they going to actually repaint that parking lot before they go and throw all that stuff up? This parking lot looks pretty dead.
It's funny, because that was a question that I asked as well, yeah, yes, and Chris Miller is witness number two, who is totally a fact witness, the project manager for the applicant, and, and he can speak to that, but my understanding is yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, is why would you put canopies up and then have a parking lot that probably needs to be paved within like a year or two?
Yeah, exactly, and you can, you can see it's in need of that, correct?
Yeah.
Photo five also shows an existing site from the southeast corner, just another view of the existing parking lot, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and six, again, is just a different view, and shows some of the islands with or without the trees.
That's correct.
Okay, then photo seven is the proposed equipment pad location, correct?
That's also correct, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that photo number seven while you're there? You just mentioned that no more impervious coverage would be, would happen, but if you remove all this, what's gonna go there? Does the, the equipment pad qualify as impervious coverage?
Yes, it's minimal though.
Okay, so there is some more impervious coverage there?
Correct, but, yes, we'll get into that, just to give you the classification on the road. Okay, and then, the Jefferson, photo number nine is the view of the parking from the Jefferson Road, correct?
That is also correct, yes.
Okay, and now we go into the renderings. So rendering one, this is a rendering of what the proposed carport solar canopy would look.
That's correct, that's the canopy for the center, the walkway.
Okay, and then rendering number two?
Correct.
That's from the northwestern entrance?
Yes, correct.
The solar canopy? And then, and then rendering three, the view from the northeastern edge of the parking lot, is that correct?
That's also correct, yes.
Okay, and there will be six different solar panel arrays on the site, correct?
Yes.
With respect to the existing, there's an existing walkway with the canopy, you're familiar with that, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then, I'm gonna show these photos. We're gonna mark this in as A1, is that what we're gonna, gonna show two photos?
Right here, and right behind these bushes, I could tell there's trees.
Yes. But are we gonna call this, counsel?
Excuse me?
What do you wanna call this?
Just A1, there's two photos existing of the, there was questions in the engineering report regarding the canopy over the walkway.
So this is existing canopy?
Existing walkway and existing canopy, and so, this, the engineer will just testify a little bit to this, an issue on here, and then, Mr. Miller will testify regarding, with direction regarding demolition.
Why don't we mark them separately? We'll do A1 for the first photo, because it's the picture of the walkway, and then A2 is the picture of the canopy and walkway.
Okay. Do you have more copies of the exhibit?
There's a numbered one that's supposed to go to Nora there.
Yeah, I got the number one.
Okay, thank you.
I don't need it.
There's more here. Yeah, I think 16, how many? Mr. Suleski, so you look at, in front of you, what's been marked in as A1 and A2, which are current photos taken of the walkway that has a canopy over at this site, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's, it's your understanding that this canopy is going to be removed, the existing canopy is gonna be removed, correct?
That is also correct, yes.
But, but the, the walkway is going to remain?
That is also correct, yes.
And then, the proposed solar carport canopy will also, will be a new canopy over the walkway, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, relative, and you had an opportunity to review the board engineer's review letter dated February 2nd?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and relative to the comment on the construction methods and, and the amount of property that is going to be disturbed, okay?
Yes, that is correct, the amount of property that is going to be disturbed is, is very minimal. The, the existing canopy, which is gonna be removed, is gonna be replaced with the rendering, if we go back, we saw rendering number one, where that is, it totally covers the walkway.
I just understand, so on what has already been submitted, rendering number one, which is page nine of the 11 photos that were submitted, that is a rendering of over the walkway that's shown in A1, what's been marked in A1 and A2, is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, just on that same line there, so the intent of my question was, which you're getting at, but really, you're proposing that column line on this existing sidewalk and walkway?
That's correct, yes.
And is there enough room after the canopy is constructed and the pier and the foundation that there is adequate maneuverability and accessibility on this sidewalk?
Yes, correct.
And we also ask that you provide, you know, should this be approved, details to that effect, dimension?
Dimension, you wanted dimension, okay.
Mark, can we just, we'll sit down.
But your testimony is you will have enough room to get that column line in this area of this existing walkway, that's where I'm trying to get to the bottom of it.
Oh, yes, the column, the column is three foot diameter.
So we have something else that might help too, you're marking it as an exhibit, I want to mark that in now, A3, I'm more than, that'll help you. Get to that comment in the engineer's review.
This is one of the cars.
Mm-hmm.
That's the, that's the, that's the.
Yes.
Was there an issue with the?
Well, it's not clear, you still have a clear passage for pedestrians walking through that, that's why it needs to be dimensioned, so that-
Okay.
-when this goes to construction, should it be approved, there's no issues, you do have accessibility to proper width, also allowing for car overhang.
Mm-hmm.
The way that the rendering looks like, it looks like it would be right down the middle of it, people have to be navigating either left or right side of it.
Okay.
I mean, is there, I mean, I think it should be sufficient to go down the middle, but I mean, was there a preference for the board?
I'd like to provide that additional information on the plan, there's no question.
Okay, just out of curiosity, how wide is the walkway?
You have to mention what kind of survey.
I'd open them, but I don't want to disturb Jennifer.
We all open them up.
The, the, the walkway's about eight or nine feet wide, the, the column is, is three feet in diameter at the base, so you have six feet?
If it's off on one side, but if it's centered.
Then you have, you have, you have like three feet on each side.
So you have three feet on each side, which could be further reduced by car overhang? When, when the fronts of cars overhang onto the walkway?
Okay.
Except they have bollards there.
No, those go with the canopy.
Right, you understand the concern that we have?
Yeah.
Also, I'm not sure if there are handicap parking at the end of the walkway.
I need to, good question.
And the, this right here is, why is this?
Well, it is accessible.
I think if you look at, at the photo that we have marked in as A1 and A2, could you go, A1, it shows you some existing parts are on that, you know, inside of that sidewalk, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, the existing bollards would, would also act as a-
They would be removed.
These, these bollards are lined up with the columns for the canopy that you're taking down.
You take down the canopy to remove the bollards.
Nor are they at every single space, from what I can tell.
They're, they're only at the uprights for the canopy.
I, I get, I guess to simplify matters, I, I think, as a board member, I prefer to see you put them on one side of the sidewalk and leave as much sidewalk as you can, like, if you left six feet of sidewalk on one side, with, allows for two feet overhang, it still leaves a four-foot walkway, which is compliant with code with ADA.
This won't be valid, this won't be valid.
Yeah, I agree, Gordon, I think that's the only way you can do that, is get it to one side.
So as a condition of approval, you would agree to work with our engineer to make sure that there's sufficient passageway to work underneath the overhangs?
Yeah, plus, I think the, at the end of the walkway, if there are handicap parking, there should be enough space for wheelchairs and everything to go there.
So Andrew, you have, you're happy that they would work with you on making sure-
Yeah, there's enough room if they, if you lay it out correctly, but the bottom line is you need to provide the accessible route for pedestrians, and considering vehicles overhanging, so you'll need to work, if, if, you can't be in the center, it's not gonna work, so you have to offset that.
Would, would it satisfy the board if, because, because the center line may be required due to other design constraints, but as an option, which I'll look into both, but would it satisfy the board if we used, in order to keep overhang away, the, the bumpers on the, installed on the parking lot, so the front tire hits?
I'll leave that to the board, but we'll have to check the depth of the parking spaces, if they're all 18 feet.
Our, our objective here is to simply make sure that there's sufficient space for a wheelchair or other-
For ADA compatible, yes.
Exactly, for the entire length of the-
Yes.
Okay, and you and our engineer would work that out?
Okay.
To his satisfaction.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. But it, but just, just in, I just want the leeway, if, would that be acceptable if I went that path with the board, as long as, you know, was ADA compatible?
We're, we're giving you room here to work with the engineer to prove to him that you're satisfying the needs of New Jersey statutes.
Yes, okay.
We need to make sure that the walkway is ADA compliant?
Correct.
And that it's accessible.
And whatever form that takes, I don't want to know the details, I want, I want it to work for somebody in a wheelchair.
Right, and as a condition of approval, is that our engineer will work with the board's engineer to make sure the board's engineer is satisfied that we've met that condition?
Exactly.
Right, you can, just to reiterate, right, not, walkway is great, right, as per the conditions we laid out, but if there are parking, handicap parking at the end of the walkway, and if there are ramps, we want to make sure that those ramps are still accessible even after the-
Is, is that area got the, the wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
Or is that over to the side?
I would think that the ADA spots would be the closest to the building.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a very good point, I would add that if they're not accessible now, when you provide that survey, yeah, you have, yeah, also, do it-
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we were, so, so just, so just so I can do, what I'm, we marked in as A4, right?
Yes, and we call it solar canopy elevations.
Correct, okay, so then we have that, so we can testify to there. Then what I'm gonna mark in, it's just a small copy, I'm happy to provide larger sets on A4, is, we do have current survey of the, the site, boundary and the parkway, so far.
Counsel, what's the date of that survey? Counsel, what's the date of the survey?
July 25, 2021.
Thank you.
Your excellent, it's amazing.
No, no worries.
I don't think this survey can-
You have a lot of things that I can email and, and mark copy, and then he can-
Put that down for Nora.
Yes, and also on, obviously on the plans that were submitted.
Top copy to Nora.
There's also every, it's a-
I didn't bring my reading book.
If we're friends. If you look at the site plan?
It does not look like any of the-
It's like a baseball.
ADA compliant spaces are on that walkway.
They're not.
That is correct, they're actually to the, to the, adjacent to the building, to the north, actually to the west side of the building.
There's at least one to the east side.
So if we look at, at your existing conditions plan, C101 on part of the submitted plan, it clearly shows the marked handicap parking spaces, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And it shows them to be adjacent to the building?
Correct.
And, and not adjacent to the walkway that was just, we, we had been discussing, correct?
That is also correct.
So just to finish up on the, the one comment that we were discussing on the engineer's review letter-
Could you please sneak into the mic?
On, on disturbance, on the, the land disturbance, it's less than 5,000 square feet, correct?
That is correct.
Wait.
Counsel, you could bring Mr. Nichols up, stuff like, I have no problem if he's testifying after those kind of factual determinations, instead of doing the, yeah.
Yeah, where are the parking lots? So just on, on a, just, Mr. Nichols can testify just factually. Did you have it on these notes? Okay. Well, the engineer, or the board had a question, the first thing is regarding the number of parking spaces, existing parking spaces.
Yeah, 866.
That's total.
Including the 17 handicap?
Yeah, and 849 non-handicapped.
And 17 handicap spaces existing right now, correct?
Correct.
So there's more than sufficient parking for the, the building, correct?
That is correct.
On the question on disturbance, now the engineer's review, did the engineer have any other questions regarding the parking spaces, underparking spaces?
Well, that wasn't my question, but now that it came up, and it was part of the completion, I asked that you update that, provide a table, the parking table, based on the building's square footage, and the, and the town ordinance, and that, just to show that it's in compliance. I didn't have any of the parking questions, I did have other questions on my letter for testimony.
Okay. But we go back to the engineer's letter, but we have no problem updating the submitted revised plans, showing the parking, correct?
That's correct.
So the next question is regarding the fire department's review, correct?
Well, I just, it's kind of, my big question was, there wasn't a lot of detail shown on the plan, I'm interested in the canopies, what the heights, the lower height, the upper height, was there an issue with circulation, also, what, what's being proposed as far electrical equipment, trenching and the like, so if you can kind of go through what's being proposed, maybe a good approach to cover some of this stuff.
Okay, so if you want to go to that, that's running out, which I have no problem with, I need to have Mr. Noah scoring in as a witness.
I would like, I would like to finish the engineering part of it.
Happy to do that.
Just, yeah.
Chris Miller's the project manager who can go, you, on those, on that, on what your engineer is asking about.
Yeah, it's really the more engineering questions, like, you know, how you're gonna hook up to your electric, where you're gonna run your conduit, you know, height of the canopy, is it proper for site circulation, emergency vehicle access, it's really engineering, not project managing, management testimony.
Okay. So if we look to...
Could you please speak into the mic?
Marked in as A3, the rendering, correct? Can you please so kindly describe that the proposed solar carport array, there's going to be six of them, so just on that, if you can look at what's been marked in as A3 as a rendering.
Can you just try to slide that mic towards you? I'm looking at the screen over here, and it's the green bar only goes this high when you talk, which means it's not really coming through it in the system. Just as you... Yeah, could you just slide it as close as you can to your mouth?
Yeah.
Now I see it. Now I see the bars. The green bar shows up on our screen.
You're being recorded. They're not picking you up.
It just picks you up. It'll be a large bar. It's only this wide, so it's not picking you up at all. So if we go to review this at some point, I can be able to hear you on the fly.
Oh, thanks, I'm sorry.
From the rendering, you can see...
That's great. That's great, thank you.
And you got to restart over, by the way.
From the rendering, you could see... Do you need her to speak again, or?
No, no.
No, okay.
So let's just make sure the board knows what you're looking at. You're looking at what's been marked in as A3, correct?
That's correct, yes. A3.
I think it's the dimensions, correct?
Yes, this will give the dimensions of the operation of the array panels. There's two different panels here. There's a 6H and an 8H. The bottom panel is the one that is proposed for that center walkway section. The top one is more of the standard size for the remaining arrays that go down the parking lot. You know, they have a certain height and width, and, you know, they're usually like, it's a fourteen, I believe fourteen feet on the low end, while the upper end can be up to twenty, twenty feet, twenty feet plus, twenty-one. And that's the case for both, for both panel sizes. I mean, as far as the actual construction of them, I would have to defer that to the actual firm that builds these.
But if we look at what's also been marked in the parts submitted, the renderings, right? Rendering one, rendering two, and rendering three, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So those are the proposed solar panel arrays, carport arrays?
That's correct.
So if we're looking at what's been marked in as rendering one, is that one solar carport array?
Correct. That's actually the 8H bottom array on Exhibit A3.
Okay. And there will be six of these that are proposed on the site, correct?
That's the center one. The others are the top one.
And approximately, well, let's just talk about the traffic flow as it exists on the site now. Will there be any difference once the solar carport arrays are installed as to the flow of traffic and the circulation of traffic on-site?
No, there would be no change in the traffic patterns.
So in your professional opinion, there would be no, there's no negative to the installation of the solar carport arrays to the site for traffic?
Correct. And there would be, this existing condition would continue.
And when you say this existing condition, where people park now, where they, you know, come on and off, the ingress and egress to the site will not be affected at all?
That's correct.
And then in terms of parking, is the only difference now that the cars, some of the cars will be parked underneath the canopy?
That's also correct.
And with respect to the canopy, is that, do they have any negative impact to the flow on the site of traffic?
No, they have no impact.
Is there, in your professional opinion as an engineer, is there any negative impact to the installation of the solar carport arrays on the site?
Again, no.
Okay. So let's talk about runoff. How is the runoff handled on the installation of the solar carport canopies?
Yeah, these canopies have gutter systems which will capture the runoff, and that will go into the existing system that is there, which we're going to do some minor upgrades.
So there'll be no negative impact?
That's correct as well.
Okay. So on, and what about the impervious coverage? Is there an increase of the impervious coverage on the site?
There is a very minor impervious coverage increase due to the islands, which are obviously going to be modified at that point. And the equipment pad, yes.
And the proposed equipment pad, that is shown in the photo that's been submitted as a location of it in photo number... Number seven, correct?
That location is correct, yes.
And do you know approximately the dimension of the, or should I ask you, the proposed equipment pad will be located...
Four by eight.
And will there be screening on the equipment pad?
Yeah, there was none proposed.
We talked about the... With respect to the height of the proposed canopy, is there sufficient height to allow trucks and cars and the circulation as it sits now?
Correct, yes.
And what about any safety measures, or adequate safety measures regarding, you know, if solar carports are installed relative to cars, or any negative to any safety issues, life and safety hazard issues with insulation, in your opinion?
What's your question again?
In your opinion as an engineer, is there any negative... If the solar carport canopies are installed, is there any negative to any safety measure on the site of existence now?
In my professional opinion, no.
All right. So, and the lighting plan, have you been prepared or involved with the proposed lighting plan?
No, the lighting plan was performed by another firm, actually. So I'm not, I will not comment on that.
But your firm did handle the landscaping plan that was submitted to part of this application, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And then you understand that there's approximately fifty-two trees to be removed?
That's correct.
Okay. And the location of those fifty-two trees are primarily in, you can show them in the photos, correct?
Correct. I think it's...
Well, you can see them if you look at photo number two, correct?
Correct.
These other trees on the islands, is that what you're doing?
Some of them, correct. And then also in photo number four. These are photos number four and photo number five, correct?
Not number three. Number three is the...
You can show some of them, but I think if you look at photos number four and five, that really gives you a very good idea of the existing trees that are going to be removed, correct?
Correct. None of three, though.
I mean, photo four and photo...
Yeah, photo four and not photo three.
Three is the bumpers for the residential.
Yeah, that's the pedestrian.
I apologize, yeah. Photo two. So have you had an opportunity to read the landscaping plan that your firm submitted?
Actually, yes.
Okay. Okay. So relative to some of the trees that are existing now that are in island, not all of those trees are proposed to be removed, isn't that correct?
Not all of them, correct.
Okay. And the primary amount of the trees that are going to be removed are just the smaller trees that are scattered throughout the existing parking area, correct?
Correct.
And then relative to the site as it is now, there is a pretty dense buffer of trees and other growth between this property and the adjoining residential, correct?
Correct.
And that is shown on photo number...
That would be four, three.
Correct?
Correct.
But even given that the proposal is to plant some new plantings in that area to give an additional buffer with the residential area, correct?
That's correct.
Because there's no other place within the parking area where you could plant new trees if it was the installation of the solar carport canopies, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Do you know approximately how many trees are being planned to be planted in that area that is shown in photographs?
I believe seven, eleven? Seven, eleven.
So as a condition of approval, it would be, you would agree to the applicant, to eleven new trees being planted in that area, is that correct?
That's correct.
Counsel, is there any specific species recommended, or is that something that you would work with the township?
In the landscaping plan, which has been submitted, I have my comments given to you.
It's fine.
In the landscaping plan.
If there's no comments from the township professionals, then it's fine, which is why I know if it was provided.
Red spider pair?
Red spider pair. Red spider pair.
White spruce?
White spruce?
Green squirrel.
Green squirrel.
So I believe that the engineer has testified on all the issues set forth in your engineer's report. I assume the engineer...
One more question, and the lighting. There's existing high-mass lighting throughout the parking lot that is, would be in conflict with the new canopy. There was no lighting plan submitted, so we do add as a condition. And as, just as a general condition, as our February 2nd letter, do you, as a condition of approval, would you agree to all the comments providing the additional details as for lighting details, drainage details, and the like?
Yes.
So what is the game plan with the lighting that you need to submit? Have you looked at the lighting? What is the game plan?
Yes, and that's going to be, Mr. Miller is going to testify on the lighting. And I have the canopy lighting plan to submit as an exhibit this evening. But for the engineer, the engineer's not going to testify on that issue.
Why, Chris? The lighting was designed by someone else?
The lighting was not designed by my firm.
Well, the fact witness can give us an understanding of what's being proposed, but again, I asked if the lighting plan be submitted, prepared, and in accordance with the township standards, and showing the isolux light, lighting, and showing that it casts enough light on the parking lot and doesn't overcast the property light?
Absolutely. And obviously, any approval would be conditioned to you agreeing that.
Is there any testimony that you can provide in terms of how much is being removed and how much is being added? I know light levels...
In lighting?
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Miller's going to testify to that.
And the amount of what's being removed?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions of the engineer. I didn't know if the board has any questions.
Are members of the board have questions of this witness?
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you. Thank you for these pictures. They help us get a good idea of what we're looking at here. I just need a couple of things to clarify. This A1 is the canopy that's here? Is that there now?
That's what's there now.
And it's coming down?
Coming down.
Okay. So that's not here, this thing's coming down in the back. On eleven page one.
Eleven page, yes.
That's coming down, okay. All right. As for the excess of fifty or so trees you're removing, can they go somewhere else in the property? I know you said you're doing, replanting eleven, and you'll work with the town forester on that, which is great, thank you, but that's still a loss of forty-two trees or so. Can they go somewhere else in the property? Can they be replanted at, I don't know, one of the schools in town, something? Is that something you'd be able to do?
We would certainly work with your forester on that. Really, as I said, you look at the site, the site is already pretty buffered heavily.
Oh, sure. These trees, they look rather young, so I don't want to lose all those, you know? And the pictures that are here, they look like they could be transported, replanted, so maybe you could work with the...
Happy to work with your forester.
Something you possibly do? Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman? So, real quick, I'm looking at the rendering one, and then I look at the Exhibit A, A1, I think. So that's clear to me, right? There is a, canopies are going to be on this walkway, so that's good. Now, what I'm not clear about is how many canopies are we installing and where are they going on this plan, right?
So when you look at the survey that page four, so look at what they said, I'll give you a little... If you look at the survey, it's right here, the canopy, right?
Yep.
So if you look at A1, and we'll submit a word for the canopy, the canopy is this dark line that's here.
That's the walkway, right? Yeah. That's it, just on the walkway?
Right, yeah.
That's all?
Yes.
And if, let's look at picture, you know, the first photo one, it shows you in the distance. That's the canopy.
He shows the site plan as well.
Yes, the site plan shows it as well.
Right, but in the rendering one, I see there are more canopies on the left and right of that walkway. That's what I'm not clear about.
Yeah, that's...
So where are they going on that plan?
I think the question is, are all six of the canopies shown on the plans that you submitted?
On the site plan, yes.
Okay.
All right. Can you guide us where that is? I'm not able to find it.
Yeah.
If you look, it appears, if you look, sir, on C201, you'd see C201.
C201.
So this is the walkway here.
Right, okay.
That's the smaller plan, that's the gray. And then there's, if you go up from there, there's two. That line, there is no, next to the curve line where the trees are between Jefferson, there are, there's no array there. And then, if you go back down to the walkway, one, two, and three, so that would be those three rows.
Okay. So the, so one next question I have is on the, other than the walkway one, other arrays of solar canopies, we are not creating any additional walkways for those, right? We are not losing any space, that's what I mean, the question, okay?
Yeah.
Because if you lose space, then that means we are going to lose parking spaces as well, right? We are not losing that?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. DeDee?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Let me just ask other members of the board. Any other members? Mr. Math?
Just one. In Exhibits A1 and A2, when I look at the curb on here, it looks like part of it's disintegrating. Is that going to be replaced as part of this plan?
Let's look at the curb, please. You have to speak to that.
Okay, I'll wait for him to be sworn in. And I guess the bollards that appear to be on this picture are, seem to be aligned with the columns for the canopy, so do they go with the canopy, I guess? Just want to clarify that. I know we kind of talked about that earlier.
Yeah, they'll go with the canopy, they'll be demolished, too.
The trees will go, too, and then where the trees are, the little Vs, those will be coming out. And the curb will be straight down, right? Where the trees are, sticking out?
Those will remain.
The trees will remain?
The Vs.
Will they be planted with shrubbery?
They'll be under the canopy, though, they'll be under the solar panels, right?
I think the trees that are existing, and again, Mr. Miller's been testifying to this, but existing trees that are, would be underneath the proposed canopy will be removed, correct?
That's what I just said.
Yes. But there are some trees that are outside of the canopy area that are in the parking lot.
I was talking about the one and two.
Only those that have to be removed will be removed.
I think the question is also the curbing. Is the curbing going to be made straight? Because conversation earlier was that you needed the four-foot walkway, and how would that impact, if you're going to leave those planters boxes there, how is that going to impact the walkway?
Oh, I see what you're saying. The trees that are shown...
All right, other members of the board have questions of this engineer at this time? Hearing and seeing none, our planner, I think, has a question or two.
I have several, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sealski, have you read the BFJ planning report dated December 20th?
That is, yes. No, that's-
Yeah, this is-
Yes, somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, there are a number of things, I'm going to help you walk through, walk through it. On the first page, the zoning table, I think the engineer spoke about this too, you're going to revise the zoning table to address the compliance issues as noted?
Correct.
Okay. Under parking, I know you confirmed that there would be no impact to parking, but can you just sort of expand on that with respect to the specific question that parking out dimensions, access and circulation will continue to, or will be made to conform if they don't, or will continue to conform to township standards?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. Next page. Item 20, lighting. I know you don't want to deal with lighting at all, but can somebody, as part of your group, testify that no lighting will be spilled out onto adjoining properties?
Well, the applicant can tell you that, that's fine.
Counsel, would you-
You need to make that a condition of approval.
Would you agree to a six month review that the board retains jurisdiction over lighting for a period of six months? If there's any issues, that lighting will have to be dimmed at the direction of-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last one on that page, you spoke about that you did submit a landscaping plan, that there is a tree removal and mitigation plan that will be made a condition of approval?
Correct.
Correct, okay. If you go to the last page of her report, before we go to that, well, no, let's do that. Last page, item one, the zoning data, we already talked about. Item two, tree removal, we talked about switchboard equipment, is that going to be screened?
The equipment, you mean, the equipment pad?
It says, I'm going to guess, I didn't write the report, but it's item three.
We certainly can make a condition if the board would like that the equipment pad to be screened.
Okay.
For screening, that's not an issue.
And should the board do that? Do we know how tall the equipment is going to be?
Mr. Miller can testify to that.
Okay. I just want to, as part of your testimony, there is a fence height requirement that we should make sure that we either conform with or variance is requested for it as part of that screening. Lastly, have you guys taken a look? You show a height on a three, max height of 21 foot, four inches and some fraction thereof for the, for the H, six Hs, and the eight Hs, a height of, boy, it looks like 29 feet, one inches and some fraction. Have you made sure that that conforms with the variance or with the maximum height requirement for a accessory structure in this zone?
Actually, no, I did not. On the table?
He did.
Did?
I don't see anything for accessory structures on this zone. Building like that's principal structure.
Yeah.
The ordinance allows 15 per accessory.
15 feet? So we're looking at a C variance for the height of these accessory structures.
We'll have to get a variance.
And you'll, is there somebody, are you a planner as well? Are you able to testify as to the positive and negative criteria required for a variance?
For a planner, as a planner, no.
Oh, are you, as an engineer, are you able to testify?
Yes.
Okay.
You want that testimony now?
No, I think there's, why don't you continue to put on your affirmative case and then as you're wrapping up, to go through the variance justifications.
Well, as I said, when we made the application, we didn't, there was no variance relief, but I'm happy to amend the application for the board this evening and respectfully request that if a variance is required for the height of an accessory structure, that it will not exceed the height that's shown in A3.
Okay, and is there any, do we have any issues, counselor, for, in terms of the public notice?
Counsel, did your notice have a catchall provision?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Because it was discovered at this meeting, now I have no issues that the notice is deficient. You can proceed under the notice as provided.
So we'll just make sure we remember at the end of the night, in terms of wrapping up, that we include that. I'm sorry, that is all that, that is all I have at the moment.
Any other questions by our professionals or members of the board?
I have two questions. There was comment by the fire department on the letter dated December the 13th. I don't believe there was any testimony regarding the location of the shut offs and how the signage would be provided.
We have, Mr. Miller's going to testify to that.
Okay. There was also correspondence from the Morris County Soil Conservation District. The letter that I have is dated January 4th, noting the application is incomplete. As a condition, I'm sorry, is that, the letter still correct? Is it status incomplete?
Correct, yes. It's still, it's not completed yet.
Okay, so as a condition, you'll have to provide the Soil Conservation District a final determination as to this project?
Yes.
And that'd be, you satisfy all their requirements? Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
Correct. You already submitted a waiver of some Morris County planning.
It's either comply or provide the waiver, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the board or professionals hearing and-
Just wanted to verify, on the height, can you testify as to the maximum height of the highest point of the highest canopy? That regard is going back to the accessory structure.
21, four sixteenths. Four and a quarter on the six.
On the six.
23 and 13 sixteenths on the eight.
Can you repeat that again?
23 and 13 sixteenths on the eight high.
That's 23 and not 29?
Yes.
Okay. 23.
Exhibit, what are you reading from?
A3.
A3, that was-
Yes.
Okay. You know what, I must have stopped.
There you go.
I didn't notice when they, I didn't share all the files. Thank you. Thank you.
No other questions of this witness at this time? All right, just going to ask, even though there's nobody here, are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness at this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, you have another witness.
All right, certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to swear in Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand. If you swear from the testimony you're about to give, it would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Name's Christopher Miller. Business address is 200 Harborside Drive, Suite 200, Schenectady, New York, 12305.
Counsel, please qualify a witness.
Mr. Miller, are you employed by, or I should say, who's your employer?
Distributed Solar Development LLC.
And are they a wholly owned subsidiary of the applicant, that's pending, on the applicant, the application is pending for this board, Jefferson Road Solar Project 2021 LLC?
Yeah, the applicant is a wholly owned subsidiary of DSD, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Blackrock Real Assets.
Your employer, DSD?
DSD, yes.
Okay. And are you the project manager on the application, on the project that's subject of the application this evening?
Yes.
And you've been here this evening, you've heard the board's questions and comments regarding the application so far?
Yep.
Okay, as well as the board's planner and engineer?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's just start with the mark, what's been marked in as A1, the two photos of the canopy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you've heard, so let's just go on, the questions regarding demolition that was set forth in the board engineer's letter on the, the walkway there.
Okay. All right.
What are, can you please just briefly describe to the board, what are the plan, applicant's plan for demolishing that walkway?
Yeah, so for the walkway, ideally what the construction team has planned at this time is a wall of some sort with a harness to hold the, I'll call it, the metal structure in place, upon which they'll cut the bolts at grade, put these into a recyclable dumpster. And in general, it would be sections of eight to 10 feet in total removed per time, and the anticipated timeline is no more than a week to remove that.
So the entire walkway will be demolished and rebuilt, is that correct?
Demolished, not rebuilt.
Okay. There won't be a walkway there?
Oh, there, yes, there will be a walkway. The, sorry, the back and forth of walkway versus covered structure.
Another cover, the walkway, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Side walk.
Yes.
And then you see in the pictures there where one board member is concerned about the areas that have been, that's disturbed, that's eroding on the walkway there?
Yep.
So that will be a non-issue because you're installing a new walkway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you also heard the board talk, the board member raised an issue in the beginning regarding the condition of the parking lot, whether or not it will be paved and sealed, or sealed at some point? Seal coated?
That is at the discretion of the property owner. I don't have any knowledge of their plans with the parking lot beyond what my project is proposing.
Okay, so in your, in your proposal, is there any proposal for the sealing or paving of the parking lot, to your knowledge?
No.
Okay. And with respect to the issue regarding the landscaping and the landscaping design, you've heard the testimony regarding that there'll be 52 trees removed?
Correct.
And there's a proposal in the submitted landscaping plan of installing about 11 trees in the area that's, by the residential neighbors, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But as a condition of approval, the applicant would work, would agree to work with the town forester in potentially replanting any of the trees that are removed either in another area or additionally, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. With respect to the fire inspector's review letter, which was also addressed in the board engineer's letter, you reviewed those comments, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then we're going to mark in what has been, I think we're at A5, correct?
Correct.
A5, that's correct. What are we calling it?
A5, correct.
Yeah, what are we calling it?
I have marked in line, A5, right?
What is it?
A5 is the labels and signage, that's what it's called.
For the electrical-
To address the fires.
For the electrical equipment?
I'm going to give you confidence right now. And Mr. Miller, just for the board, you're familiar with the site, correct?
That's correct.
You're familiar with the site on this occasion, correct?
Yep.
Piss him down.
Did the board have what's been marked in?
A5, yep.
Okay. Mr. Miller, you're familiar with what's been marked in as A5, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as a matter of fact, you provided this exhibit, I mean, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's entitled Labels and Signage?
Yep.
Okay, and part of your company, they prepared this document, correct? DSD?
That's correct.
Okay, and that was at their direction that this was prepared, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you obviously, in your work, are very familiar with, you deal only with solar panels and solar carports, correct?
Only solar panels, but yes, multiple configurations of them.
Okay, so with respect to, you'd be, these are kind of briefly described to the board, what has been marked in as labels and signage, A5.
Yeah, so you'll see a bolded line, essentially, the, that is where the electrical equipment pad would be located, as well as the disconnect, upon which, right, there will be some signages for shut off with the applicable labels as needed. And on the left side of the diagram, you'll see the corresponding, like number five, right, says solar AC switchboard, that corresponds with its location.
This is showing the proposed six canopies, carport solar canopies, correct?
Correct, with any and all applicable labels and signage that may apply to the project.
And these labels and signage not only are they important to you and to the property owner, but for first responders, correct?
Exactly.
And you reviewed the fire inspector's review that was submitted as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in that review, there's a quest for the, a diagram showing the signage, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and then with respect to fire and safety or first responders, if required by this or order the municipality, would the applicant be willing to do any specific training that might be required for the solar carport canopies?
Yeah, that's actually preferred.
And when you say just to briefly let the board know, what do you mean when you say preferred?
We like to have safety in mind. We want the first responders to be comfortable, understand what they have to do in the event of an emergency, to shut the system off. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if the board engineer has any other questions on that issue regarding labels and fire-
No, I haven't.
Okay, great. So we move on to the next issue regarding lighting. Okay, so let it mark in what's been marked, A6. Okay? Okay, move it down. Okay, so that will mark this in A6. We also mark in A7. Does the board have any?
Yes. A6, titled canopy, lighting plan?
Lighting plan, E120. And then A7 is marked as second DAS sheet, E600. Mr. Miller, you have what's been marked A6 and A7, in front of you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and, and your, your instructions, your, your DSD's instructions, you have a lighting plan, canopy lighting plan created, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what's shown on A6, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then also on A7, is this the equipment for the lighting, is that what that is?
Yeah, so A7 is all the equipment, the panels, modules, inverters, the DAS system, as well as the LED lights to be used.
Okay. So we look at A6, you just, so there are existing light poles in that parking lot now, correct?
That's correct.
And do you know approximately how many of the existing light poles will be removed for the installation of the, the solar carport canopies?
Yes, approximately six in total, and they're only, the only ones to be removed are those proposed that conflict with the footprint of the array.
Do you know approximately how many light poles there are on the lights?
I would rough, I would say around 10.
Okay. And then, so relative to A6, can you just briefly describe to the board, what is the proposed lighting plan for the canopies?
Yeah, so you'll see, and it may be a little small, but there are little bullet point, black dots, that shows the proposed location for the lights, shown on A7 as well. They're approximately three inches, three and a half or so inches in size tall, and approximately 19 inches wide, and they'll be mounted to the underside of the canopy, pointing downward, to shine light for the parking lot.
And do you know approximately whether or not the, the footcandle, any, and these are done with the LED, LED lights, correct?
That's correct. And they typically have a, a dimming effect or ability to be dimmed, given the scenario or needs of the site.
And, and you did hear the board's recommendation for a condition to, any approval, that there would be a six-month window, that after the installation of the lighting, as if, if there is a, a, a negative impact of, of the lighting on any of the adjoining neighbors, that you will agree to revisit and, and reduce that lighting so as not to negatively impact on the neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you agree to that condition?
I do.
Okay. And relative to A7, can you just briefly describe to the board what A7 is?
A7 is the specification sheet for all applicable equipment for the site, in particular, in regards to lighting, the furthest right upper hand corner and the furthest right lower hand corner are in regard to lighting.
I don't have any additional questions on lighting, I don't know if the board engineer has any specific question?
Oh, no, I just, this needs to be submitted, and again, I see that there's, the lighting is provided underneath the canopy and in the immediate vicinity of the canopy, but this will need to be updated to include the areas that were previously lit by the existing lighting, the drive aisles in the area, existing drive aisles in the area between the canopies in the building, you know, to show that you have sufficient lighting without overspill over the property.
Yeah, absolutely, and the footcandle ratings to speak to kind of the, the change, right, throughout.
Yeah, I see the ones you have, but it cuts off.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I was going to say, this, this particular exhibit doesn't show the lighting affected by the remaining stanchions.
Understood, okay.
No, we understand that any condition of approval would be subject to submission of a lighting plan that you're, you're by the board engineer.
Right, absolutely. Any other questions by members of the board of this witness on this testimony at this time? Any, any questions from our professionals?
Actually, just because we talked about a height variance, let me ask you a question. You, it's necessary for these, for these panels to be mounted at a certain height to clear vehicles underneath them and whatnot, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. You said that these, the LED lighting have the ability to be dimmed, do you have any plans to dim them after hours?
We, I personally would not be the one to be doing the dimming of the lights, it would be up to the discretion of the property owner.
Fair enough.
I would think, Mr. Chairman, as a reasonable condition, that the board would impose a dimming of after-hours for these LED lighting, considering there is a residential neighborhood to the east.
Absolutely, well normally, we would actually ask to find out from the property owner what kind of schedule they might have for the lighting, and whether that's total shut-off at a certain time, with random safety lights, of course, or whether that would be a dimming during certain hours.
Well, does this location have shift work, do they have people working during the night? Anybody know that? Yeah.
Well, that's a good question now.
Well, if we're talking about dimming the lights, I'd like to know if anybody's still working there?
Probably maintenance later, but I mean, I know for, for the most part, they're probably shutting down at, you know.
There's no second shift or anything going on?
Their primary hours are 8:5.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure their second shift's overseas.
Very likely. What, what would be the board's wishes with regard to any scheduling of lighting with regard to being the proximity? I mean, obviously, we're getting evidence that there's no spillover to the residential, but there still might be a sky brightening effect that, that has to be considered. And so it would be my position, and I'm not going to speak for the whole board at this point, but my position would be that, that I would not want the sky to be brightened in the residential area, so that that would imply that there should be some sort of cutoff or automatic dimming.
Well, I have the impression that all of these lights would be under the canopies.
That's correct.
All the new lights.
So there shouldn't be too much skylight if they're under the canopies pointing down.
Yeah, that's true.
And I guess the existing office building must have some kind of schedule for the, via the lighting, I mean, as long as they comply with that, I, nobody's complaining already about it.
And would agree to the six month?
Right. That makes sense.
The only thing would be the six month is a after-the-fact review based on a complaint received, so if this board requires some dimming, and you said the dimming is?
Up to the owner.
Up to the owner, and, and you guys just install the panels and that's it, you have no control over the lighting?
Correct.
Code enforcement would follow up at a later date from that complaint, anyway?
Okay, well, we've got an engineering review that goes up to six months away, and if it, if it does...
That's six months from the receipt of final permits.
Right.
So, not from tonight.
I'm sorry, yes, you are correct.
Just to be sure of that.
You are correct. Any other members?
Quick question, is there any difference between the lighting under the six-panel canopy versus eight panel canopies?
I'm sorry?
Is there any difference between the lighting in terms of power or whatever, between the six-panel canopies and eight-panel canopies?
Yeah, all the canopies, they're the same.
Or is it the same?
The lighting will be the same on all of the canopies, meaning the intensity?
Yes, yeah.
It's a bit different, right? Is it more powerful for eight-panel canopy or?
Not. I wouldn't say it's more powerful, I would say, there, I mean, there's a little bit of a height difference, right, there's two-foot difference in height, so in terms of proximity to the pavement, right, where the light would be located, maybe slightly different, but in terms of intensity, you wouldn't know the difference.
So, but will it be sufficient to lit the walkway? That's really my question.
Yes, yes.
Okay. It can't quite make it isotropic and homogeneous.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, hearing no more questions at this time, are there any members of the public seeing them? Oh, Mr. Planner?
If, if I may, I, I think I, I misunderstood some testimony. I believe I heard earlier in the hearing that this walkway that's shown on A1 and A2 was going to remain, and then, Mr. Miller, I thought I heard you say that it is going to be removed, can we clarify?
So maybe what I understand, I think it was a walkway area is going to remain, correct?
That's correct, the steel structure itself will be removed.
How about, well, we have a curb and we have a sidewalk.
So is this going to be, this area, this is what the planner's asking, the walkway itself, is that going to be removed?
No, that will remain.
Okay.
So, so then this area, would you agree to fix any of those areas?
Yeah, that's the standard, any sort of broken piece of sidewalk on that walkway as part of this construction, right?
Did you testify that you were going to tear up what's there and rebuild it? Or are you just going to fix what's there?
We would repair what's there, currently.
And remove the little boxes of the diamonds of the planters?
Yes.
So those, that was actually my next question, Mr. Chairman, so those, I don't know what you call that shape, but those diamonds, truncated diamonds, they're going to be filled in on the walkway side, they're going to be total, I'm, I'm asking this question, they're going to be totally removed, they're going to be filled in on the walkway side with concrete, and then on the parking lot side, where you actually have the, the triangular piece, they're going to be paved to match the sidewalk, the, the macadam, the, the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, so there would be no?
There would be no more Vs.
No more Vs, there'd be no more planting areas there.
Correct.
The bollards are going to be removed?
Correct.
And some measure of parking protection, whether it's wheel stops or something else suitable to the board engineer, is going to be installed?
Yeah, we'd certainly work with the board engineer.
Okay, I think, I think, I think I understand. Thank you. And, and the paint, the, the pavement striping, is that going to be restripped?
That I personally don't know, I've seen various outcomes, it really depends on the, the status of the lines.
Well, I'm looking at the status of the lines.
It's going to have to be, I think.
Yeah, I hear you.
I would recommend that that be made a condition of approval.
I agree, that there be at least some new striping in the areas that are affected by them.
May I, Mr. Chairman? You keep mentioning approval of the owner, I assume it's ADP?
That is correct.
Have they not been in contact with you about resurfacing, repainting, nothing? They just kind of hire you guys and say, you know, do your thing, or is there some communication, it seems like there's no communication?
No, we, we communicate very frequently.
But not on striping or resurfacing?
Yeah, that's, that's more of their engineering department, my focus is particularly surrounding the solar canopies.
I mean, I'm sure, I mean, the solar canopy is obviously very important, we all, all agree with that, just these certain things, I mean, there's, there's puddles in this parking lot, I mean, there's, I mean, maybe resurface and no parking lot, it's the first thing you guys should do, but then again, I don't, I'm not getting into the finances of that, but I'm sure it's very, quite expensive, but, I mean, there's, there's certain things here, this parking lot's in bad shape, a lot of spots, so I, I can't imagine ADP did not, you know, consult you guys, asking things like that, should we repave this, should we reseal it, repaint lines, anything?
Yeah, I mean, we're a solar company, though, we're not a...
Agreed, I understand, I'm just saying, it was a communication there, you said yes, but it doesn't sound like it, though, in this case. Other things, for sure, but when it comes to the resurfacing, no, it doesn't sound like it.
Well, I, I guess that question leads me to the question, we have some conditions of approval that you're making representations of without the actual owner of the property being here, how are we going to be assured that those conditions of approval are going to be adhered to?
Well, number one, if the condition of an approval, in that approval, they have to be adhered to, or we are not going to see the permits and everything else that can be.
Well, I, I guess my...
So the question would be, is whether or not the applicant has the right to find any of those conditions, and all the conditions that have been raised so far, we have no issue with, because they relate to the application that's pending before. What I, so when you're talking about the walkway and filling in that area, that's an area that is going to be affected by the installation of the solar carport, so that's clearly in the purview of the applicant, so the applicant is testifying, no issue on those conditions there, that is it. Relative to the parking lot, that is not within, that's outside of their contract, they don't have any control over the, the condition of the parking lot and the painting or the striping, except that it might affect the, where the, so where, where the carport panels are going.
But you're here with a request for site plan approval?
As it relates to solar carport.
But normally, normally we have the, because I, I have, I sent out one of my office staff today, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, and took pictures of the site today, and normally we have, I mean, I've been with the town 32 years, I've rarely heard an application where the property owner or representative from the property owners here to address. There are giant potholes in the parking lot that my car could fall in, there are code violations in the parking lot that I would have addressed them tonight with the property owner, but without that, that representative here, what's to say that they're going to meet those conditions, because you say that, well, you're not going to get permits, well, I'm from zoning and construction, I'm the director of planning zoning and construction, we give you permits first, then you go do the work, we were, are then forced, if you don't meet those conditions, to write summonses and violation notices and then take, like, we don't want to do that, we want it, it's usually a representative here who agrees that knows going into it, that we're not forced after the work is done, that these things aren't met, that then we have to enforce.
Or, or to be, or to come back here, I, I apologize, but to come back here in a couple of months with, with a, a request from you to eliminate any, some of these conditions, we don't want to be here that way.
Yeah, and we'd like to get our approval tonight.
Right, but we can even see in A1.
I, so let me just address a couple of the issues that I have.
Okay, but, but I'm, I'm just going to say, in A1, there's clearly a failure in the drain, right there, that's right there in A1, and that's going to get to the drainage from the solar panels, it's all related.
I hear you. So there's a couple of things, if, if, and, and I did meet you when I submitted the application, you know, whatever, initially, and, and, you know, ADP's a very large company, and I would say that clearly, if anybody has a code violation, that's outside of the pending application, as it doesn't relate to the application, by all means, issue whatever violation or notice of, you know, potential violation, I mean, I heard loud and clear first, first moment of this application, that this board wants that parking lot paved, I mean, so I, so that, you know, my note is, make sure that I deliver that to ADP, because I don't think it would be their intent to not be a good neighbor, I mean, they're, you know, it's been a rough couple of years for everybody, but they are a business, they are, been here for a while, the fact that they're looking to put solar carport canopies means, without them telling, indicates that they want to stay here, and that, that they're looking to, to continue on, on the site, so again, we can't, as I said, if the board wants to impose certain conditions in their approval regarding that, there's nothing that I can do, that's for the board to decide, but if it's, anything that has to do with a violation, that's outside. But if it's, anything that has to do with a violation, that's outside of the pending application. And as I said, my client is not ADP. And I will tell you, I have represented other clients and this plan as well before other boards. Owners are never there. Owners, I mean, I've gotten, I do a fair amount of menus where, even if we're a contract purchaser, owners are rarely there. It's up to the applicant to submit the application in front of the board. So, I mean, if the board felt strongly that they wanted representative, I've represented ADP as well, not in pursuit of you, but in other municipalities. You know, they're an extremely hands-on, really great company to work with. So if they, I thought that they needed to be here tonight, that the board would, I would have made sure there was representative. But I'm not in the million years tonight.
What, what we would have liked would have been to have somebody available to respond to the questions that we think are very closely related to the application. You can say that they're separate. To my mind, they're not.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I'm saying is if there's code violations, if your zoning official decided that went out there and there are?
Usually when an applicant comes with a case like this before us, they want to tell us not only how wonderful it is that they're doing this, but that they're gonna clean up all sorts of other things too that goes with it. So they're gonna, we're gonna walk out with a nice, bright, shiny, new parking area with these on top of it. And that's not what we're getting here. That's all.
I hear you. And I would suspect that you're going to go through all this, that's the way too, so.
I know them well enough to know that you're probably completely right, but there's nobody here to tell me.
Let me just ask our attorney then. If we put the provisions in that the parking lot needs to be improved or upgraded, maybe not open to blacktop, but, but maybe?
Seal, patch, and striped.
Fill in the potholes and seal it or patch it, whatever. Okay, and we put that in as our requirement. Does that help your case? Then let's put it in.
I think that's fair enough.
Yeah, I think you've proceeded with the permission of ADP, correct? This application is filed with the permission of ADP. The solar panels are going on top of the existing drive aisles and parking area. Parking area is, as provided by our board member and our zoning officer, is that in disrepair. You'll make those repairs as a condition of approval.
Right, so I just want to make sure that in a condition of approval, it's exactly what you just were speaking to. That would be filling in any of the potholes potentially.
This gentleman will draw it up, and if you have any questions, you can talk to him.
Because there's a big cost differential between saying just, you know, repave the whole parking lot.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't calling for that.
And seal coating, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, my wording was upgrading.
They're a big company, but I don't want to spend the whole.
My wording was upgrading the parking lot, seal it.
Strip it.
Strip it.
I think the easy one is removing any dangerous conditions, right?
I think that's fair enough.
That's a general welfare analysis.
I suspect that their employees have probably been working remote for the last, you know, year and a half, two years, so maybe that. I don't think there's been a lot of activity on that site.
So I think it's appropriate to perhaps leave this in our very capable engineers' hands and building officials' hands to say that any unsafe conditions, including potholes, cracks, broken curbing, raised sidewalks, all that stuff needs to be fixed.
Just put the conditions in because I agree with the attorney here. ADP wouldn't invest this kind of money with regards to the property. So you put the conditions in, you say this is the conditions to approve it, so we can move forward.
Agreed. Any other questions of?
Just to comment on that, just for the ADP. They run their cost analysis to work to the effort in cost to pave a parking lot after you have the canopies in, is dramatically higher than doing the work prior to. So that's a consideration for them. If they were thinking of doing, repaving the lot five years from now, the costs would go way up higher when the paving equipment and the dump trucks have to be working around the canopy and use special equipment to pave underneath there. So it's really in their best interest to get that lot up into a condition that's gonna last five or 10 years or longer prior to actually installing the canopies. Maybe after the piers and the columns are up, prior to the canopies going. It becomes very expensive to pave underneath those canopies.
All right. I guess that's that testimony. So I'm gonna ask if there's anybody in the public, seeing nobody in the public, that wishes to speak. Now we have to address the planning issues with, for the variances.
Well, I guess the only variance would be potentially a height variance.
Correct.
Because it's a 15 feet is permitted in the zone and not shown on the plans because they're potentially 21 to 20, no, I'm sorry.
23 feet, 1 and 13 16ths.
No, 23, right? So 20, so the height variance would be 21 to 23, right? As shown on A1.
Correct, 21.4 for 6H.
Yeah, because it's 14 and it goes up. So it's 14 on the one side, you're complying. It's when the canopy goes to the other side, they're at 21 feet or 23 feet.
Right, I would say just given the fractions of a foot here, I would round up and go to 22 and 24 if the board accepts that.
Do you need to order next section?
Yeah, especially if we had to measure from the potholes of the parking lot.
If you repaved it, you might not need as much.
This is true, you know? Well, as I said, so on the 22 and the 24, so you're committing a subject in his own. Obviously, as the planner and the engineer knows, solar panels are inherently beneficial use this evening. There is public policy that we want solar, as much solar as possible, and solar carports fit right within that criteria. So as designed, to be able to fit into the lot and to be able to not impede the current flow of traffic and any possible trucks or, you know, SUVs that are gonna park under there, there's a requirement for the height to be of the 22 and the 24 foot. So I would say that there's certainly no negative impact to, you know, master plan and zoning ordinances because it's a permitted accessory structure, so it's just relative to the height. And this is a huge site, almost 18 acres. And other than the residential neighbors on the one side, they're not even allowed to see. Their site distance can be so far, and there's such a significant buffer. I don't see the negative asset, and it's an open structure, there's not, you're outside of it. So I would respectfully submit that we need all the criteria for a C variance relative to the height and request that the board grant the variance relief as part of our preliminary danger site plan approval that we're seeking this evening with the conditions that we can go through then. If we'd like to, but as discussed.
We'll do that. We'll go through all of the conditions before, yes. Is the engineer gonna say that it needs to be this high so that emergency vehicles can go underneath it?
Engineer is gonna say exactly that. Fire and engine, fire trucks need to potentially get through, and that's the reason for the height.
I would ask one question, that's the reason for the low end of the height. Is there a reason that the angle of the, of the canopy requires it to go up as high as it does?
From the safety or you mean from the?
You just, you're the applicant, you just tell me why, why the, why the high end has to be as high as it is?
There is an inherent angle that the earth is to the sun. Without that proper angle, the solar panels won't work. That's one. Number two is obviously for access of vehicles. But with the major, it provides for runoff, okay? So the rain goes to the others, but it's really the effects of how the inherent solar panels work.
Maximum exposure to the sun.
Well, Mr. Miller, you've designed other solar facilities such as this on other buildings?
Several.
Several? And they all have this kind of tilt to it?
It varies. I would say the typical tilt, right? It depends on your latitude, right? It could be anything from four degrees to seven and a half, depending on the system type. In this case, I believe it's five. Five degrees, five and a half degrees. It's not showed on there. It's part of the productivity, though, so yes.
So you recommended this particular type of degree based on the location of this site relative to the sun?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I have a general question. Are any of these solar panels made in the United States? I know there's only one company that, in the United States, that makes solar panels. Most of them are overseas. And the two parking lots we have now with solar panels, none of them were made in the USA. I'm just curious.
I personally don't know.
There's one page here, shows engineered in Germany. Is that accurate? Top left picture, bottom corner of that picture?
That would be accurate, yes.
I think the Germans make the ancillary equipment and not the panels themselves. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I was curious about the panels.
Okay.
And what's the lifespan of these panels? Just from my knowledge.
These panels, I mean, the lifespan of the project is certainly different, but they last anywhere from 25 to 30 years.
Okay.
Yeah, the last, the last applicant we had said 25 years.
And if there is malfunction, they're replaced, obviously.
Right, and I'm trying to remember that they would retain like?
85%.
85% efficiency, if that sounds right. So.
All right. Quick question for the board professionals. Is 14 height on the lower end of the panels, is that sufficient for the emergency vehicles? Good enough?
14 feet is the minimum height of any public highway or structure. That's the height of any bridge on any highway. The minimum clearance.
Okay.
So it'll pass any vehicle on the road.
All right.
Right?
I'm sorry.
Day job, you probably meet people that more than I do.
All right, I assume that's your case. I don't see any members of the public come up to speak either in favor of or in opposition of. I guess that closes the evidentiary portion of this case at this time. Are there any comments that the board wishes to make at this time?
Mr. Chairman? Comment?
Mr. DeDeeche?
So, I just want to thank, right? I think it's a good, very good project, partially in general supports all green efforts very much. Anything which can reduce our carbon footprint is very, very appreciated, right? So in general, I just congratulate the applicant for the very great project. Regardless of rejection, right, that's a separate thing, but I just want to congratulate on this, just having the project. Thank you.
All right, any other comments by members of the board? Is there somebody willing to frame a resolution? With a whole mess of requirements here that our attorney is going to read off as they start the process of moving the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this application, subject to, Dan, you wanna read the conditions?
I will.
First, I'll make, well, I guess I'm making the motion. I'll make any statements later.
Sure. So condition is revision of the zoning table. Provide parking data, dimensions of the columns, provide sufficient passage for the walkway. Light plan details, drainage details. Screen the equipment, the equipment pad at the building. That would be at the height requirement of whatever the fence, I think it's a six foot high fence in that location.
So that would be working with our professionals about the process of screening.
That's correct, and whatever material they would like to use as the screening. Add additional trees to other areas of the direction of the township. You want to say shade tree, forester?
The forester, yeah. They would work with regard, with, in conjunction with the forester to determine if, and whether they could put, replant some of the trees.
Correct. Six month review of lighting from final inspection. Offer a training program for township first responders as to the shut off capabilities of the system. Provide Morris County Soil Conservation District either waiver or comply with whatever requirements come from that department. Repaint, restripe the parking spaces affected by the carport installation. And fix, I have this as fixed dangerous conditions in the parking lot, including repaving the parking lot in its entirety.
I did, I think we wanted to add the repave of the parking lot in its entirety, but we just wanted to bring it up to a suitable condition.
Improve the parking lot.
I could say fixed dangerous conditions in the parking lot, including repaving?
Up to?
Including repaving any uneven surfaces. Again, I'll try to craft the language in terms of?
Filling in any potholes and the ceiling is really the minimum.
Again, I like dangerous conditions because, you know, that could also, that could not just necessarily be potholes, but uneven surfaces.
But they might interpret that differently than you.
Well, I'm gonna rely on our township professionals to determine what's a dangerous condition.
Well, you could say deteriorated parking areas, within the area of the proposed canopies.
So fixed deteriorated parking lot and removal. I like the dangerous conditions, including repaving, resurfacing those areas.
Working, working with the engineer to determine how and what needs to be done.
Do you want to recommend restriping too?
That was already stated.
Certainly parts of it that have to be because it's dangerous and it would be a violation to have an area that was not properly striped.
Yeah, the striping has to be compliant. Yes, that's period, that condition. Striping must be in sufficient order and compliant with standards.
Anymore?
Hang on.
Those are all. All right, we've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. DePiero, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDeeche.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Math.
I'm gonna vote yes, and I'd like to emphasize that I believe that to the extent that variance relief is required for the height of accessory structures that is justified by the engineering necessity of the solar panels.
Napolitano.
No.
Stanzio.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I very much appreciate your time this evening.
Okay.
Our counsel will work diligently on that. Have it at some point in time in the future.
We don't have another meeting in February, but the first meeting is the first week of March.
Oh, the 14th is canceled?
Yes. They would not be ready for the 14th.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Tom, you gotta adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The rest of us sit here.